Ready.
Call the meeting to order and begin with a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the purpose of those who are watching, I am removing my mask so I can be heard better. Please know that I have been vaccinated. There are three people in this room, and I am well-distanced from the other two parties. I want to remind you, this is an open meeting, that we are keeping records of the meeting, both a tape meeting and also written records of the meeting. And it is open. Two pieces of recognition I'd like to start with. First of all, on behalf of the county, I'd like to extend our sympathies and best wishes to the family of Bob Walter, our planning director, who lost his mother-in-law. Also, read a letter from Bennett Cavalletto. It has kind of reminded that the Milton Free Water Junior Show is coming this weekend. He took the initiative to contact the commissioners and talk about his lamb Houdini. And so, as a reminder of what's going on, I'm going to read his letter. Hello, my name is Bennett Cavalletto. I am 12 years old, and this is my seventh year in 4H, but my first year in the Rising Star 4H group. I really love showing sheep. This will be my sixth market lamb, and I also like showing breeding ewes. This year, my market lamb for the Milton Free Water Junior Show is Houdini. He is very nice and funny, and I'm very excited to see how he does. I've been working with him at home to practice for the show. After showing in our market and showmanship classes at Junior Show, I will be selling Houdini in the online sale. I have been saving the money from all my lamb projects to start a business when I am older. If you are considering buying a lamb or supporting a 4H member, I hope you will think of Houdini and myself. Thank you for your consideration, Bennett Cavalletto. Thank you, Bennett, for reminding us of the Milton Free Water Show. That sale will be both Saturday and Sunday online. So if you... There's lots of places where you can find out the details, but these kids work really hard, and I encourage you to support them. Now, was there any public input from someone who is not addressing an issue on the agenda? Any additions to the agenda?
Yes, there are two. There is a public works payable that has been added as item six. And then, for item at the very end, will be a discussion regarding the opiate litigation.
I don't want to interrupt, but John, can you hear? Or I can't hear. You're being... I couldn't hear nothing.
Okay, sorry about that. There are two items that have been added. One is a public works payable that is item number six. And at the end, there will be some discussion regarding the opiate litigation.
Okay, any other additions? All right. The first thing we're going to do is...
Do you mind if I do the minutes before you do?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I'll go back to the minutes before we get into our hearing. We have minutes of two meetings, April 20th, 2021, and April 22nd, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
Unmove.
That was unmove by Shaffer.
Is there a second?
As soon as I get unmuted, I'll do that. Does that mean we're... I'll second for both sets of minutes.
Okay, stay unmuted to vote, please. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, okay. Now, we'll move on to item number one on our agenda, which is a Development Code Amendment. We are going into public hearing. I am required by law to read an opening statement, which I am going to do at this point. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this land use hearing before the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners to order. My name is George Murdock. I am the chairman of the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners. Our role today is to conduct a public hearing concerning property owners Alan and Nan Heilmans' request to propose tax changes in the Umatilla County Development Code, UCDC, to incorporate the provisions of ORS 215-7802E, to allow the creation of parcels between two and five acres in size, each to contain an existing dwelling, on land zone for forest use or mixed-farm and forest use grazing farm GF. The criteria of approval for amendments are found in UCDC 152.750, 152.755. I will begin the hearing by asking staff to summarize the application. I will then ask the applicant to testify followed by those in favor of the application. Then, any person in opposition or those who have questions or concerns will also have a chance to speak. If there is opposition or questions, staff may respond to them. The commissioners also may ask the staff and witness questions throughout the hearing until the record closes. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral and/or written testimony, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose, particularly because of the difficult logistics of how we're doing this. When you testify, please begin by clearly stating your name and your address. If you represent someone else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you want us to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, photographs, petitions, or other documents, or physical evidence, please provide it to me or the staff. It will be marked as part of the record. Are there any questions about procedural matters? If not, I will go to staff, who is speaking first on behalf of the planning staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Cindy Granger, county planner, and property owner Nan and Alan Condon proposed the tax changes to Unionville County Development Code to incorporate the provisions allowed by Oregon Statute 205-7802E. This is a law that creates parcels between two and five acres in size, each containing an existing dwelling, only on land zones grazing farms. The entire statute of ORS 205-780 is included in the package, however, only applicable tax results. The criteria of approval for amendments are found in Unionville County Development Code, Section 152-750 to 152-755. This matter is a legitimate matter because it proposes to amend the tax of Unionville County Development Code in a manner that will affect county properties located in grazing farm zones within unincorporated Unionville counties. Therefore, the county has no right to consider or approve the tax amendment. The process of approval by the county involves the guidance of county planners with the recommendation to the board of county commissioners. Unionville County County Commission met April 22nd, 2021, and recommended approval of this proposal to the Development Code with the addition of subsection 10 under UCDC Section 152-087, Subsection E. The text reads, "The resulting parcels shall be added to the county's inventory of parcels that cannot be further divided," and the addition of subsection 13 under Unionville County Development Code, Section 152-710, Subsection G. Again, the resulting parcels shall be added to the county's inventory of parcels that cannot be further divided. The additional recommendation by the planning commission, that text is shown in the proposed tax amendment in red text that is found in your package. The following captions have been included for review by the board of commissioners. The county will verify the conclusion, the draft text, amendment, and proposal, ORS 215-780, and full, again, applicable text is found in bold, and the county's facture sheet comments from Oregon for development conservation and development, and one of those from Oregon. Those are both reviewed by the county commission itself.
Other staff speaking on behalf of this matter?
Any other staff?
Any other staff speaking on behalf of the proposal with regard to the proposal? Could you respecify the findings of... I assume this went to the planning commission. Could you respecify what their action?
Yes, they recommended approval by the board of commissioners with the addition of some language under Section 152-087E and 152-710G. They proposed the addition of the text under... The resulting parcels shall be added to the county's inventory of parcels that cannot be further divided. And they recommended approval with the addition of that text.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
Hey. I'm not sure if this is the right way. Do we need to make a motion first before questions, or do we want to add a section?
No.
You're still in a public hearing.
We're still hearing mode.
The only question I have made, and it looks like the planning commission had a lot of discussion on this too, is... And you talked about that there's a limited amount of GF zones in the county that this may be applicable to. Is this... Will this recommendation blanket cover those other 30-ish GF zones throughout the county? Or will each one of those have to come back for separate applications?
So this would allow the opportunity for those landowners to submit an application to purchase in those dwellings if they meet that criteria. So it's added to the GF zone test. But you're right, each landowner would have to submit an application in order to accomplish that.
But the pathway hasn't been created.
It would be created if it was approved.
Gotcha. Thanks, Mayor.
Other proponents who wish to speak on behalf of this action? Other opponents to this action? Other comments from public agencies?
No further comments have been received.
I didn't hear that.
No further comments have been received.
Oh, okay. Is there any reason to call for continuance of the matter or keeping the record open? I'll close the hearing, and we'll go into deliberation and decision.
There is a proposed ordinance if the board is still inclined. It's ordinance number 2021-05.
03 or 05?
03.
If you agree with 03, repeat that number. I got 21, yeah.
03.
03?
That's correct.
Any comment questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
John, sir, I would move for approval of ordinance number 2021-05. You're agreeing with the recommendations put forward by the Unionville County Planning Commission? I'm just gonna second that. I want to make sure before the second meeting. I'm pretty sure we are, but you're talking with the amendments that were in place. Okay, then what's that?
The language that was proposed by the planning commission is in the proposed ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, planning department. We will now move to solid waste franchise renewals.
Good morning, Commissioner. This is Gina Rimmer. I'm the staff liaison to the Solid Waste Disposal Committee. And we have before you the annual renewals for our franchises, Hamilton Sanctuary, and... I'm sorry. Hamilton Sanctuary, Sanctuary is postal one, Denver, WIS, Eastern Oregon Waste Management. And there is a number of board orders there in those key keys that listed. It's 35 through 39 are recorded today for your approval. All of the states that are paid by these franchises, they are eligible and are standing with the county. Their insurance is verified, so if there are several of them present right now, if there are any questions?
The other question that I have probably from Doug and Mike, my question is, can we approve the...
I think they're individual resolutions.
Okay.
The first being BCC 2021-035, I believe.
Can I go back to the comments real quick?
Sure.
Gina, what was the recommendation of the waste?
The Solid Waste Disposal Committee met via virtual on April 13th, 2021, to consider the applications of these five franchise holders. And we voted unanimously minus the one franchise board that's on the board for their own franchise giving things unanimously to approve and recommend these applications to you for renewal. Your community commissioner?
I'm not sure this is the correct time to ask this question, but with the legislation that is now being proposed and is moving through the Oregon State Legislature, will these contracts be able to address those changes coming forward?
I would defer to Councilor Olson on that because he more is good with legal aspect.
I'm sure I'm not familiar with that legislation, but if it is something that is mandated by the state, yes, all the franchisees will have to comply. Thank you.
Other questions?
I would move for adoption of BCC 2021-035. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I would move for approval of BCC 2021-036. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I would move for approval of BCC 2021-037. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Mr. Chair, would you approve of BCC 2021-038? Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Mr. Chair, would you approve of BCC 2021-039? Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think a number of our franchisees are on the... Participating in the meeting this morning. I would both like to thank our franchisees for their exemplary work on behalf of the residents of the county, and I would also like to thank the members of the Solid Waste Disposal Committee for their continued willingness to serve. So, thank you all. Item number three, solid waste franchise transfer.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would like to interview Cindy Granger and Katie King, who are with us this morning. And they are here to talk about the transfer of a franchise from... It's basically the same company. It's the same ownership, but both parties are involved in that and are here today to answer your questions as far as the operation of their business. In terms of the Solid Waste Advisors Committee that on April 13th, 2021, to consider their application for a franchise transfer, all aspects were discussed, and the committee voted unanimously to approve their application for the franchise transfer to you for final approval. And also, I'm honored to interview Mr. Mike Laterry from Hamilton Sanctuary, who is also with us. He is the chairman of our Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and he is there to answer any questions that we have over as well.
Good morning, Mike. Questions?
Good morning.
Mike, did you want to make any comments?
I don't. The only thing I would just reiterate what Tina said. All the necessary requirements that the Solid Waste Ordinance mandates of a franchise transfer have been met as far as financial, as far as equipment, as far as showing experience, that they plan on using the same workforce, the same staff for at least five years until they pull us in. Correct me, Cindy, or either of you, if I've missed something. But I think all the necessary requirements have been met for transfer, and I think it's in your hands. And that's really all I have unless anything else.
Thanks, Mike. It's been a really smooth... We already had Quinn and Katie with the sale transfer, and everything has been going amazingly smooth, and we're looking forward to moving forward.
Could you identify yourself, please, for the record?
Oh, sorry, Cindy Granger, Humboldt Refuge.
Thank you.
Is the name going to stay the same or is it changing as well?
It changed just too. We removed the Andrews cycling, so this is Katie King. Also, just Humboldt Refuge now.
Any other questions, comments? We need two items of action here. Adoption of Order Number BCC 2021-041 and Adoption of Order Number BCC 2021-042. Can I have a motion?
I would move for approval of adoption of BCC 2021-042. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Chair, would you approve of adoption of Order BCC 2021-042? Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number four, five, and six will go to Mr. Fellows.
Good morning, Commissioner Tom Fellows, Unionville County Public Works. I believe the first item is the road transfer or the asset dedication of Schmitz Road. This was brought to us by Bob Levy. Schmitz Road is a road that... Existing right-of-way, no road has ever been introduced in that that runs between Andrews Road and Emmer Road. There are numerous utilities involved. As I said, there's never been any road associated with this piece of right-of-way. It makes perfect sense at this point for this vacation. My conversation with Olson was that due to the fact that all of the property owners that are involved in this were in favor and signed the application that there was no public security needed. Correct me if I'm wrong on that. But so, at this point, the public works is certainly in favor of moving this forward.
And Mr. Fellows is correct. Since all of the property owners have signed the petition, there's no need for a public hearing, and the board of commissioners can take action on petition to vacate the room.
I would make a motion to adoption of Order Number RD2021-02.
I'll second it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. We're voting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Mr. Fellows?
Okay, the second item before you, I believe, is the payable for the repairs that we had to our chip spreader. It became evident that by the end of the season last season, that we needed to have some major repairs done to our chip spreader. And our shops was already loaded up with plenty of work, so we collected it, take it to the dealership and allowed them to do those repairs. And we're simply, now that that's all done, we're ready for our chip steel season, and we're just asking for this payable to be approved.
I would move for the approval of payment of PacWest to the amount of $19,100,37 cents. I have to do the dental check here. I'm sending the PacWest lobbyists for a amount of payment. Now that dental check, I will second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can be confusing, they both spread something. So, all right, item six.
Okay, the third item before you is we were... Our crew were down on the power line to Edin Hurson. We were doing the shoulder work. One of our road graders clipped our pole and did some damage to the pole with the end of his grader blade. And this table is for, so that we can pay PGNL for replacement of that power pole.
Is there... Is there a temporary of that?
We are working on that, John. I cannot at this point tell you for sure one way or the other, but we have been in those conversations with our manager.
Mr. Chair, would you approve of that? Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right. Thank you, Mr. Fellows. Item number seven is a public health payable. Joe, are you there?
Are you saying, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, this is Joe DiMarra, Director for Eco Health. This first item is for some advertisements on the airways for our prescription overdose prevention program. This is a regional activity that we are funded from OHA to put forth. And so this is to get some overdose, prescription overdose messaging awareness, information out of the airways on both sides of the mountains covering our regional area.
And just to be clear, the funding is provided by OHA, not General Fund Office.
Correct, yes. It's all part of the grant funding we receive from OHA for this project. But we need the number of the expense. We have it before the board for approval.
Mr. Chair, would you approve of that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right. Joe, you have another one?
Yeah, the next one, I believe, is our accreditation maintenance payments.
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, back in February of 2019, we began the process for the accreditation for having our department credit. That is, starting from that point is essentially a 12-month process of intensive document collection, creation, and dance submission. Also, COVID hit at that time, so we have not made any progress on that front. And we've actually asked them for an extension, which we're still waiting for the panel answer on. But when we committed to this process, there is a yearly maintenance fee that we are... We committed to paying to stay in the process essentially every year. The amount comes to a little over $5,500. We split that out across our programs based on the FTEs within those programs. So this is funded in parts by some programs that are supported by General Fund as well as programs that are not.
I would move for approval of the $5,600 to the full process fee. Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
All right. Emergency declaration extension.
Okay, what's coming before the board is consideration to extend the existing county COVID-19 state of emergency declaration, and it was originally made back on March 18th of 2020. It is scheduled to expire on May 5th, and what's before the board is consideration to extend it further, what the proposed date would be through July 7th, 2021. This is primarily at the county level to allow flexibility in making emergency procurements as well as personnel changes. This is separate and apart from any action that's taken by the governor and the state to declare state of emergency.
I'd make a motion to adopt order number BCC 2021-043 with reservation and comments upon second.
What was the last part of that?
With reservation to discuss after a second.
All right. And Josh, can you explain that a little bit? I guess, my hesitation on this is, if we're trying to gain local control for the, to have our, like, our public health make decisions about even control of the county, I guess my concern is, how do I, if you're saying, yeah, we want to extend our emergency, tell the other man, tell the governor, give us local control of the emergency, so that's kind of where my dilemma is.
If possible, I'll make an arbitrary decision that due to the lack of a second, we can still open the matter for discussion. Is that okay, counsel?
Yep.
Okay, so the matter is open for, we do not have a second, but the matter is open for conversation or discussion by the commissioners.
I guess to respond to Commissioner Shaffer, if the county decides that it is not willing to declare an emergency at the local level, then the governor will probably take that considering that she wants to delegate any type of responsibility in response to the COVID emergency.
Okay, you're kind of cutting out a little bit, but the governor, say that part about the governor, would you let him?
Okay, if you want the governor to delegate the authority to respond at a local level, if the local commissioners decide there is no emergency, I don't think you're going to give much credence or thought to delegating. You want me to be a little more clear? If you do not consider there to be an emergency to respond to at the local level, do you think the governor is going to delegate the authority to the board of commissioners to respond to a non-emergency?
I'm kind of hard to hear, if you're a media guy, are you?
I think.
I'm going to take a pass on the governor.
Okay, so, if the board of commissioners does not believe that there is a local emergency, how much weight do you think the governor is going to give to your consideration for asking to assume the responsibility to deal with a non-emergency?
Well, at this point, I don't have a whole lot of faith in the governor, so, give it away.
I understand exactly what you're saying, and I think that my feelings at this point, and this is kind of one of the reasons I've had these discussions in the last few days, is that, first of all, Unionville County, along with many other counties, have asked for the ability to have local control. At this point, we're almost 15 months into this program, this emergency program, where there are policies in place, there's protocol in place, there's procedures in place to address what was identified as an emergency, and all of those are not mandated by the county, but are mandated by the state, and will continue to be mandated by the state. I think that in our case, whether it be the FTE, whether it be the response or the ability to respond by our public health department, or our ability to hire or retain employees under a fast track emergency order, I think all of those things are in place. I think realistically and responsibly, I think that I would vote against it, Cindy, just because I don't vote, I do not want to delude the meaning of emergency order in the county, in Unionville County. The longer we go, the more diluted and more vague and more veiled an emergency order becomes. I think having an emergency order such as the drought that has real hands-on, tangible consequences for the agricultural industry in our county is very viable, and that's something that we could put in, put the county under in drought emergency order. Unless I can be convinced otherwise, and I'm welcome to listen to any of the comments, I'm not sure where this emergency order puts us in a stronger position, and I think Unionville County needs to be in a strong position, but not a deluded position. Those are my comments.
Joe, would this help or hinder you, if we go to reset our emergency order, does that help your operations, or if you deny this is an emergency order, does that hinder your operation?
So, I'll let Doug interject if I say something off-base on the legal piece of this, but I don't believe the declaration has changed how we're operating, with the exception of the ability for us to make some large expenditures on a quicker timeline than a normal process that is typically there, being able to confer with one of the commissioners for some large expenses on a short turnaround was very helpful, especially earlier on in the pandemic, as we were making lots of quick changes and lots of adjustments early on. That is less of a, that is less of an issue for us right now, and to my understanding, nothing else regarding our response would change if this emergency declaration goes We already have, we already have the authority we need to do our work without the emergency declaration.
I guess just follow up what Joe said, is that most of the authority that the public health department is utilizing right now comes from the state of Oregon emergency. If that emergency goes away, then all of that ability will have to be done at the local level. And so the board of commissioners will have to be making those decisions.
Wish we could do that at the end of the governor's declaration of emergency on June 28th, I believe, emergency, is that correct?
Yes, you will have to take some type of action to reinstate an emergency so that you can take action.
Which is true, in case Doug is, we can reinstate an emergency order by just calling a commissioners meeting through that process, right, if this becomes, if there's unintended consequences, if we don't pass it.
That's correct, but you will have to be saying that there is an emergency then, but there's something else.
This is Robert Paul. I would just ask if in any way our, having an emergency declared or not affects funding streams? I don't know if Joe knows that or not, but that would be my concern, is that, that if we, if we choose to not be in a state of emergency, does that change our funding opportunities?
Because I'm asking, I'll ask counsel, if, if the state of Oregon is in a state of emergency, that includes us, right?
That is correct.
So I would think, Robert, if, and my understanding is that if, from what I just asked, the state is still going to be in a state of emergency, and we are part of the state.
That is.
Okay, I understand that, I just asked just a question for my chair of proceedings and work.
Yeah, it is not clear at this point what impact a non-emergency at the local level would do on any type of financing to the county or to the private organizations. I don't know if that would no longer allow certain funding to be available for local entities.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm going to second the motion, mainly because I don't want any organization, whether it be a private entity or another public entity, to lose out on opportunity to fund you because you didn't extend the emergency. So if that's said, that's the only reason I'll second the motion.
Okay, there is a motion and a second to extend the emergency until July 7th, 2021. I would be amenable to adding the sentiment that this does not preclude our desire to return to local control as quickly as possible. Can we do that, counsel? We still acknowledge and recognize the damage it's having to our economy, the damage it's having to our schools, and the fact that we wish to return to local control as quickly as possible. Is that agreeable to the commissioners?
I have to admit, guys, that I, Doug brought up several points that leave question marks at each end, and I probably don't have enough information, solid information to hold on to this right now, so I would probably abstain.
All right, Commissioner Shaffer, are you agreeable to that?
So, if you're calling for a vote, then I'm going to yes.
I'll vote yes. Commissioner Doran, abstain?
I abstain.
Okay. All right, we have passed BCC 2021-043 with those additions to the motion. All right. Item number nine, I believe that's yours, Sheriff Rowan.
Ten.
Ten, I forgot, we added another one, okay?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
The request before you is a request for basically an over-hire in our patrol division. A couple of months ago, one of our senior deputies announced his intention to retire July 31st, or October 31st of this year, and due to the amount of time it takes to recruit and hire a position, and then the training that goes along with that, that can be up to a year to 18 months, we would like to hire, have authorization to hire a person as a replacement and get a jumpstart on the training. Right now, we're kind of in a state where we currently have two new hires already in the patrol division. One just graduated from the academy back on April 1st, the second is due to go to the academy this month. The academy itself is four months long, and then there's required field training that occurs after completion of the academy. And so, basically, we're just trying to put ourselves in a better position to recruit and hire by July 1, someone to fill that vacancy that will come up in October of this year.
I would move for approval of the over-hire request from Sheriff Terry Rowan, with reservation for comments. I'd like to thank Sheriff Rowan for submitting all this, supporting the information with this, but the one thing I want to add to this is, as we get, looking forward to opening this law, I think this over-hire is critical not only for the items that Sheriff Rowan discussed, but as we look at the penalty round and the happy ending of security, and Unionville County Sheriff's security, having the ability to have that over-hire, I think is going to be extremely important as we come into that future, so thank you, Sheriff Rowan.
Thank you.
We'll insert your optimism about those events into the minutes.
I think I've always said that you're not going to find a bigger optimism than this, Mr. Chair.
All right, Commissioner Shaffer, have you seconded this matter?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Item 11, data system purchase.
Good morning, Commissioners, Dan and I, for Administrative Services, and before you is a proposal to upgrade our data center at the courthouse. We have two data centers, one that services our law enforcement, jail, or corrections facility there, justice facility, and then we have one here at the courthouse that services all the other major systems, financial, the health, the assessment, taxation, records, planning, all those, our web presence, all run on the data center. And just, when we see the word data center, we kind of go, we have a big, huge thing with huge buildings that like Google has, and all of us know, when we say data center, we got multiple servers that work with each other with redundant capabilities, so when one goes down, another comes over and moves the, seamlessly moves the servers over to one physical box or to the other, to make sure that we stay up at pretty much, you know, 99 or 99% of the time, and they share the load to make sure everything's working smoothly. Those servers now are over six years old, and since they house our main operations, we need to make sure that those are replaced within a five to seven year timeframe, and part of the reason behind that is they start to get old, they wear out and break, and once they start getting past six, seven years old, it's hard to get some departments to, because they're not paying, and they don't make some secure parts for very long in this industry, so to say. The next part of that is we are getting ready to implement a new financial system, we're going to provide us newer capabilities, and we need to make sure that we're able to run on those. We currently are running on the Windows operating system of 2012, and we need to move to 2019, the newer version on that system. So, we need newer equipment and newer system, and all of that. Now, the big difference between this and our current system is it comes with a disaster data backup system, the appliance that is backing everything up, that we can actually also store onto the cloud of our backups too, if we want, to ensure that our backups are kept secure, hardened away from anybody trying to ransomware and get into our backups too, because a lot of the ransomware tricks, if you know, maybe are affecting backups. So that's something we don't, can't have to keep going currently with the current system, and that's a, was a added cost, that's about 50%, 40% of this cost goes to that backup and that disaster recovery portion. Any questions, sir?
I have a quick question for you, Dan. And probably because I'm not as computer savvy as some other people, but my question is, we're upgrading to a 2019 platform, and that seems, that's already two years old, is there not a 2011 platform?
They have designed, well, now that's the software, and they have designing that in, that's Microsoft's latest and greatest platform. It's, uh, Windows Server 2019. And I have Eric Jensen with me too, my, uh, he's the one that charges the data centers.
I saw him shaking his head when I asked the question.
So, yeah, unfortunately, that's when they come out, and that's what's current. And, but as you see, 2012, it's still, um, supported by Microsoft. So those things run at least 10 years or so after they've been out there. So theoretically, we, we will be upgrading these before 2019 will be the longest supported by Microsoft.
Thank you.
And, yeah. And the, the one at the sheriff's office, we, we bought a few years after this one, so that's in the, in the sights of next year, we do, or after we replace that one out there. But with us moving forward to the new financial system, we kind of need, it takes a lot of work to move our old stuff to the new, so we need to, we can't just do it again unless, so we want to implement this first before we start implementing the new financial system onto this system.
And the Micro, the Microsoft is, is, is just part of their, um, data services. This, this doesn't include their communication services. And we're not going to make way from Google, or are we? Or how does that apply?
Well, we're not, anything with, um, so since we could say Exchange or Office 365, this is not, not of this. This is just the operating system that runs.
Just the data, the data.
It is. It's, it's actually, uh, Microsoft Windows Server 2019 data center is what runs this system, which is different than our Google, um, system. It runs all of our, our cloud and mobile and on the move and collaboration systems.
Okay.
Did you move for approval, Doug?
No one has.
No, just getting ready to do it. But if you want to.
No, I, I thought you might have already.
Okay. Mr. Chair, move several of the, the courthouse data center, data center, you have, that says something, maybe about $179,999.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number 12 is a director's hold update, order number BCC 2021-044.
Uh, before the board is consideration to change the design needs with the employees at lifeways that have the authority under the state statute to place the director's hold on individuals. Uh, this is just an update. The last one was done several years ago, and they are adding two additional employees and removing, actually, eight.
Mr. Chair, approve of BCC 2021-041.
Second of the comments.
Comment?
Uh, my question, Doug, is, good, what certification do these folks have, and what is needed to hold this position?
I believe these are all CMHPs.
Do, do, are, do you have any feedback?
Yes.
And then, then these all have certificates?
Yes.
Okay.
They all hold a state certification.
And is this a certification in the name of the county or the name of a lifeway?
It would be in the name of the individual, uh, person. But lifeway is also has its separate designation and certification by state.
That is, okay, thank you.
All right, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Uh, Robert Paul.
Are we in hearing mode now?
Oh, yes, we're going to, Robert, are you there?
Yes, I am.
All right, then we'll go into hearing mode.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, this morning, there are six supplemental budgets before the review consideration. I'll summarize them and, and let you consider them. Budget Order 2021-40, uh, general fund, communicable to these program requires supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known to be adoption of budget. This requires an increase in state revenue of $760,000, an increase in personnel services of $347,000, and an increase in materials and services of $413,000. Budget Order 2021-41, general fund, general county, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known to be adoption of the budget. Requires an increase in state revenue of $500,000, an increase in material services of $250,000, and an increase in transfers out of $250,000. Budget Order 2021-43, human services, the school-based mental health program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known to be adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $44,000, an increase in materials and services of $6,000, and an increase in contingency of $38,000. Budget Order 2021-44, human services, mental health reserve, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known to be adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfer end of $250,000, and an increase in contingency of $250,000. Budget Order 2021-45, human services, mental health administration, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known to be adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenue of $415,000, an increase in materials and services of $415,000. And Budget Order 2021-49, stainless reserve, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known to be adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenue of $7,500,000, and an increase in contingency of $7,500,000. Those are the six supplemental budgets before each day.
Okay, we're still in hearing mode. Questions?
Yeah, Robert, I got a question for you. Does that mean we actually receive this supplemental budget, or is that in anticipation of?
Uh, it's in, in anticipation. Um, the documentation that I have seen says we should receive it in the next five to six days. Um, certainly hope that comes through, but I'm anticipating receiving it before the end of the fiscal year. And so I wanted to, uh, allow for that in our opinion.
Hey, uh, follow up question, Robert. I, I was under the assumption, everything I read is this is coming in as a federal grant. Is it asked through the state? From what I read, it wasn't coming through the state.
Um, you may be correct. Um, I, all of the previous ones have been funneled through the state, and most of our federal funding is funnelled through the state. However, if it becomes necessary, I can, I can make that transfer.
Okay, yeah, I, I understand that part of the, this everything has been, obviously so far, so it's been also, either, either way, it's settled and out.
When it comes, I'll be excited.
Actually, no matter where it comes from.
We, we all approve of the excitement.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll go out of pro, we'll go out of hearing mode and, uh, end of deliberation.
Mr. Chair, approve this motion, agree Budget Order 2021-041.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay.
Make a motion to approve Budget Order 2021-041.
Second.
On favor, say aye. All right.
Aye.
Make a motion. Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve Budget Order 2021-43.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
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 Aye. But, I, I, we're not synchronized very well with it.
No.
I make a motion to approve Budget Order 2021-44.
Second.
If you both made the motion, I was prepared to second it. All in favor, say aye.
Uh, aye.
All right, okay.
Make a motion to approve Budget Order 2021-49.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, make a motion to approve Budget Order 2021-49.
Second.
Say, all in favor, say aye.
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 That's it for the supplemental budget.
What?
There are budget transfers made between those order numbers.
Did we do all of them? All right, then we'll go to budget transfers. Robert?
Uh, there are four budget transfers, uh, in the, in the, for today's meeting. Uh, Budget Order 2021-39, general budget surveyor, uh, requires a transfer of appropriate, appropriate funding not known to be adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in material services of $10,000 and a decrease in contingency of $10,000. Budget Order 2021-42, uh, human services, SC63 here, requires a transfer of appropriations to appropriate funding not known to be adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in material services of $15,000 and a decrease in contingency of $15,000. And Budget Order 2021-46, capital projects funds facility reserve, requires a transfer of appropriations to appropriate funding not known to be adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in capital outlay of $850,000 and a decrease in transfers out of $850,000. And Budget Order 2021-48, GIS equipment reserve, requires a transfer of appropriations to appropriate funding not known to be adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in material services of $2,000 and a decrease in capital outlay of $2,000.
Do we have any motions?
Mr. Chair, approve of Budget Order 2021-041.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
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 I approve. I, um, make a motion to approve Budget Order 2021-42.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
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 Make a motion to approve Budget Order 2021-26.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
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 Make a motion to approve Budget Order 2021-48.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. This might be an appropriate juncture to acknowledge the fact that all three commissioners will be in the same room at, at our next meeting. The courthouse will remain closed and the meeting will not be open. However, we will continue to have the accessibility to, to anyone who wishes to participate via Zoom. But all three commissioners will in fact be in the same room. All right. Uh, item 15, property conveyance.
Okay, before the board is request for authorization to sell property back to a, uh, the record owner. This property is per closing for additional property taxes. Uh, under state law, uh, the Board of Commissioners does have the discretion to sell it back to the property owner for an amount not less than the amount of property taxes ever delinquent, which in this case is $2,778. So, but the request is, is to repay back the tax lot to the record owner. And, and so, aside this, all your last requests this year, all the other property plan out for auction yesterday.
Dan's trying to talk with you.
I just make a motion to approve, order number TX2021-05.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. The next item is a payable, payment authorization to the city of Hermiston. Uh, it is, from time to time, we engage in activities with the city of Hermiston relative to marketing, promotion, and branding. This is yet another example. Um, and I'll be the one making the motion to approve this, but I do also know that Commissioner Dorn is interested in making a comment.
Uh, I, I'll make a comment before the motion. Uh, I think, I think that in the bigger picture, we participate with a lot of different communities throughout, um, throughout Unionville County, including earlier this year, spending, um, considerable amount of time with, with the expansion service and coming to kind of some agreements on how branding and co-branding can be accomplished. I think this is an important issue, uh, very important issue to me, because I think that, that one of the things that I've heard on the campaign trail is what, what, what is the county, what does it do? And I think that being able to get our branding out, uh, I think you've all heard me talk everything from vehicles to, to signage, uh, the, the way, wayfinding and everything else, I think it's very important for the county to take branding seriously. Um, whether it be this, this particular arrangement with the city of Hermiston, I know that they have a huge canvas called a water tower, um, that, that may be a, 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 a joint branding. I'm not saying that Unionville County needs to be dominant in these situations, but I think it should be recognized that Unionville County participates with all of these communities, uh, throughout the county in all different kinds of ways. And I, I think that one place that we lack is educating the people of Unionville County, the citizens of Unionville County, how much we can partner with the municipalities, but also in, in the open hinterlands of Unionville County where there are no incorporated areas. So I, I, I think that the water tower, whatever project that's out there, um, I think it's important that we follow through and make sure that, that, um, when we do these joint agreements, that Unionville County does get built. I'm not saying that you can't build by any means, but, um, it's always important for us to have our brand out there. I mean, I think everybody on this hall is proud of what we've brought hard for the brand, and, um, having it out there is, is important, not just us, but all the citizens of Unionville County. Those are my comments to term for the order.
Okay, I, I have made a motion to this regard. Is there a second?
Second. I, I'll second your motion.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We have another item that we added to the agenda, which is a discussion of potential opiate litigation that, that is going on and our participation. Counsel?
Okay, thank you. Uh, a number of Oregon counties have, uh, proceeded with litigation against, uh, opiate manufacturers. And, and trying to resolve that litigation, uh, it appears that it would be helpful to get all of the counties in Oregon, uh, agree to be bound by that litigation and participate in, um, in the settlement. And so, as before the board is consideration whether Unionville County would be willing to join in and be bound by that litigation and participate in any settlement.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that Unionville County is going to participate and you have a kernel of litigation to.
A second of questions. Um, Doug, do we know what the formula is, or the percentage of money coming back to the counties, or is that dependent upon how many counties participate? Is it a 50/50 with the state, or 75/75, or do we know yet?
Uh, we don't know yet. The only thing we know is that if all of the counties do not participate, the, uh, amount will be reduced by half.
Okay, any other comments? What's your pleasure? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Commissioner comment?
This is the, I, I have, I have met, um, a lot of things going on, but none that I can.
My other comment is, uh, I'm still looking for, uh, article on CNN. I have a gap to see it. I know a commission director was on there, was, uh, Joe Ferraro, wrote on CNN, talking about Unionville County. If anybody sees that, I would love to, I would leave forward to you.
Well, I asked, I, somebody called and told me we'd been on, and so I asked the producer, uh, I don't want to keep prompting you, Commissioner Dorn, but when we were discussing, I think if we want to continue discussing ways in which, uh, we might brand, uh, we might brand, market, or whatever, I did think I was aware that you wanted to make note of the fact that we ought to consider letting people know in some manner when they enter Umatilla County.
Yeah, it's a project that actually came up during the campaign also, the one that I've just kind of been looking at the last couple of days. I'm not even sure Commissioner Schaefer would succeed on this yet because it was just yesterday's conversation. But I have talked to a couple of private property owners. There's also avenue through the State Department of Transportation. But to look at entry signs similar to kind of the really nice ones that Hamilton, Alpharetta, Hermiston have, and some of the other cities, including Stanfield, I think Umatilla also had entry signs into their cities. But it's, the welcome we have right now in the Umatilla County is three inches deep, green, and about 28 inches long. So, to welcome Umatilla County, if you're driving 70 miles an hour, it's pretty tough to read. I think actually one of them says, leaving moral, not entered Umatilla County. But to create, I think a project to create our own entrance welcome signs is a project we're taking on.
Okay, a matter of record. Any other comments, additions?
I just want to thank Dan and I for you sending the link to the CNN part. I have now, thank you.
Have we noticed any spike in ratings?
No, I think they even lost yours, actually.
We're adjourned.